So, how you doing, Mr. Shaughnessy? Did you, did you, did you meet with the, uh, were you, you and Laura, did you meet with, can't remember his name, uh, who during the study, you, oh, okay. How did that go?
Well, we were at, we went down to the, met with Todd Diorio, the union fellow, and we went up to Albany and met also non-union contractors.
Okay, so, resolution, BOE 81, be resolved that the board president hereby authorized to issue a board's decision in KTF grievance number 141502 as recommended by the board's grievance committee. Understand the motion?
So move.
Okay, any discussion? All those in favor, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Okay, motion carries.
Uh, this is final, last page of school, before regions?
Uh, BOE 82, be resolved that the board hereby appoints Danielle Guido to fill the vacancy on the Board of Education created by the resignation of board member James Michael from his expiring term for the period commencing on Ju-, what is it, May 20th? Until she takes her oath of office for her newly elected term. So, you, your, this five-week term will expire six thirty fifteen. You take the oath of office, your newly elected term on July 1st.
That'll be my third term, so.
I need a motion?
So move.
Second? Second. Discussion? Okay, we have to ask if you're willing to take the decision.
I mean, I was just looking forward to sitting in the audience tonight and getting up for public participation, but, uh, yes, I accept.
She's got so much energy. And we're so old that we have to bring her back.
It's true.
All those in favor, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Okay, motion carries. Welcome back.
Thank you.
It's a brief afternoon.
It was a whole hour of executive session.
Mr. Purnas, can I swear you in?
Oh.
I do solemnly swear that I will support the Constitution of the United States of America and the Constitution of the State of New York, and that I will faithfully discharge the duties of the Office of the Kingston City School District Board of Education as trustee according to the best of my ability.
Thank you.
Okay, we also need a round of applause for Mr. Michael. Thank you very much. And the rest of you have to wait until July first. And now, BOE 83, be resolved that Tim Reed be appointed as acting AP at KHS Effective immediately, until June 15th, 2015. Want to take a motion?
It's a walk-in.
It was a walk-in resolution?
I didn't hear it.
Second?
A second, I didn't hear it.
I'll read it again. BOE 83, be resolved that Tim Reed be appointed as acting AP, as principal, at KHS Effective immediately until June 15th of 2015. Want to take a motion? Can't discuss until you do that.
So move.
Second.
Second, okay, now discussion.
So, what, what is this about? We have, Dr. Rajan has, is out for the remainder of the school year. He's been, he was sustained an injury, so we are, we're short one assistant principal in order to assist Mr. Reinhardt and his team to finish out the last three weeks of the school year. Mr. Reed, who's one of our teachers at Miller Middle School, is also a, has his administrative certification, and he has been recruited to jump into the fray for the next three weeks and help out at Kingston High School. You remember, we had a similar situation to this two years ago, and we did, we acted, we appointed Danielle Chapoto to be the acting assistant principal for a short period of time, just to help the, the school get through.
This one, will anyone replace Mr. Reed?
Yes, Mr. Reed is being replaced. We have a qualified substitute that will be put in his classroom for the next three weeks.
Is Dr. Rajan returning on the 15th?
No, Dr. Rajan will return, won't be returning this school year, but once the Regents' exam starts, there's not, no day-to-day student attendance at Kingston High School, so Mr. Reed will go back to his classroom over at Miller.
Any other discussion? All right, all those in favor, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye, opposed? The motion carries.
And Mr. Reed is here, just to introduce him, everyone. Welcome aboard, and we appreciate your courage.
Thank you.
Okay. We have reached a portion of the agenda where we allow public participation, so does anyone who would like to address the board at this point, please come forward to the microphone. I want to remind you that you have a two-minute limit, please speak directly into the mic, because we may be able to hear you here, they may not hear you on the live stream, so please speak into the microphone. It's not a conversation, and we refrain from personal comments about staff or personnel.
Good evening, my name is Karen Siri. I don't know if you've heard, but there is a beautiful new playground down at John F. Kennedy School at Hasbrook Park, and, oh my God, I'm not going to be able to do this without tearing up, but thank you, oh my God. Monday morning, everybody that was there, it was a great ceremony, just a couple people speaking, and thank you to all of you who came down to support us that morning. Thank you for speaking, Ms. Shiri, even though you didn't know you were going to. It really, it does make a difference, and standing on our side, watching 365-ish kids kind of itching and waiting to get their turn to go down a slide or go on the swing was amazing. I took pictures of them while they were taking pictures of us, because it was so much fun to watch them going, "Okay, this is really cool, can we go play now?" Like, "Let's just go play." Today, I was at the school, and I left around four o'clock, four fifteen, and there were about twenty-five to thirty kids outside playing, and you never, ever saw that before. So, the school kids love it, and the community loves it, so, three years of hard work and dedication from you. Dr. Catalino, thank you so much for listening to us and dealing with us and putting up with us for so long, because I know it wasn't easy, so, when I figure out what my next project's going to be, I'll let you know, and we'll get started. So, thank you again.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Good evening. Get to follow my wife. For those that don't know, my name is Wesley Siri. I am the president of the PTA at John F. Kennedy Elementary School, and again, I am here to say thank you to the school board and the administration for sticking with us for three years. It's an unbelievable process that we've been through, and the playground is beautiful. I myself, last night, went down to vote, congratulations on your victories last night, and about quarter to eight, kids on the playground with their parents. Again, something that needs to come back a little bit more, so it's really nice to see. If you get some time on a real nice day coming up, in a good afternoon, just go down there and soak it in, because that's what it's about. So, thank you very much, we really, really appreciate it.
Mrs. Dexter?
What's under your budget?
I wrote this down so I could be brief, and obviously, I'm not being brief. I want to start by congratulating you on the voter approval of the budget. After attending the board meetings, it's clear to me that balancing all of the needs of the stake, shareholders, stakeholders is, you know, requires an act of balance that would challenge any Cirque du Soleil performer, I'm sure. So, that is wonderful news, and congratulations. Also, congratulations to, and I've written them down so I don't forget anyone, Dr. Jakovitz, Ms. Shaughnessy, Mr. Michael, and Ms. Guido on the reelection as trustees. I know sitting on the board is a huge commitment of time and dedication, and it's often thankless, and I really appreciate your dedication to that. And finally, thank you too, and I have the list here, I'm going to read them right out, and I'm sure I left people off, the Board of Education, Dr. Catalino, Mr. Olson, Mr. Verge, Dr. Perez, the Playground Palooza, wonderful parents, the City of Kingston, the Heisman Foundation, community volunteers, Mr. Clapper and his guys, Maureen Bauer, who was just always there to support us, and everyone for the JFK Playground. You could, anybody who was there at the opening could see the smiles on the kids' faces, and as the two that spoke before me said, "I was in my room the last two days doing some paperwork, some SLO paperwork, and I was hearing sounds I had never heard at JFK before." Staff calling out to parents, parents calling out to staff, children playing, and this was at quarter to five both days. If you could drive by, you'd be amazed at what we're seeing. It has been a breath of fresh air to the JFK community, and we're so thankful, with a lot of gratitude, thank you.
Anyone else wish you to move? No? Okay, then we'll move along. I'm going to turn it over to Dr. Catalino for the superintendent's report.
Okay, thank you, Ms. Shiri. First thing that I would like to do is thank the community, the people who came out to vote last night for approving our, our board, or our budget, as well as our capital proposition. So, we, we had, you know, it was, it was really a significant victory, more than sixty, you know, by more than sixty percent. We were just very pleased with the results, and I also want to congratulate, it's good to see that our incumbents have been reelected and will remain in these seats, off and on, I guess, is the way things are going to squeed out for a while. So, it's, it's nice to be able to move forward in the right direction with the team that's been doing this for the last three years, or for the last few years, so, so thank you and congratulations on that. I, I was going to talk about the JFK Playground, but I think that's already been done, and I can take it off my superintendent's report, whereas it would be a big last year for the last, at least the last year, while we're trying to give up this, but we, I was, just, I will add, I was there for the, for the opening. I didn't realize that Dr. Perez was just going to unleash 360 students onto there. I thought maybe there was going to be some sort of order to it, there wasn't, but we managed not to be trampled, and, and all the students got to get onto the playground. It was, it was a lot, it was a lot of fun. It was fun to watch the students and be part of that, so, I'm looking forward to that, being there for a long time, and to our students and our parents enjoying that. One of the things I wanted to start doing a little more, I've been talking a lot about what we did, I really want to talk about some more things about what's going on, moving forward, especially this time of year, so we don't, so at least the board, I try to put some in the letter, but give you some things that, to do this, these next couple of, of weeks, if you're interested in getting out of things that are going on. Thursday, May 21st, 21st, Miller's Grade 5 through 8 concert, chorus concert, which includes music from Perfectly Perfect, composed by Kingston City School District Music Teacher, Elisa Handel. On Memorial Day, KHS Tiger Band marching in the Kingston Memorial Day Parade, as they usually do. On the 28th, Bailey will host the 5th and 6th Grade Chorus and Orchestra. On the 30th, is the KHS Prom, if anyone wants to swing by and see our students in their, in their best. On the, on the 2nd, Kingston City School District's Elementary Track Meet over at Deet Stadium, it goes on all day long. It's fun to go in there, over there and see our kids, they compete against each other, the buildings all compete, and kids were all in the stands and yelling and screaming, and it's a, it's always a fun day, and for the, this, this will be my fourth, and the first three, it was extremely hot each day, but it didn't rain, so, that's, that's good. So, we want to come over to Deet Stadium, it's all day on the 2nd. And also on the 2nd, Kingston High School, there will be the Regents' Common Core exams, so, you don't want to go to that, but, so you know. Lastly, I think we started up the day, we started off a public session, there wasn't anyone here, but I just wanted to, also, we start with a moment of silence at the beginning for Mr. Len Kane, who passed away early this morning. I know that there was, there was no one in the crowd at that point, so I did want to also recognize Mr. Kane, served as the Kingston City School District Member of the BOSI's Board forever, really, and he was, for the little bit of time that I was here that I got to know him, he was a gentleman, he was very funny, and always looking to do what's best for Kingston. He always looked out for Kingston over at BOSI's and looked out for students, so, it's unfortunate and sad, but he will be missed. Mr. Len? Oh, second century update, I'm sorry, yes, I do have, a quick second century update, not too much report, other than, we continue to move forward submitting plans to stay there, we have received approvals for the fieldhouse, so we could, we will be ready to go out to bid as soon as we have the clearance, as soon as we go through the due diligence process on the PLA, we have that report, and the board makes a decision, we're ready. We have, you know, we have all approvals from New York State for that, the fieldhouse part of the project, so that's good news. We've been in the queue there for a long time, so, it's good to know that when, when we make our final, the board makes our final decision, we'll be ready to, to move forward with the approvals on the state. Now, that's all, thank you, Ms. Shiri.
Any questions? I'm going to take a motion to approve minutes of May 6th, 2015.
So move, second.
Discussion? All those in favor, please signify by saying aye. Opposed? Obstentions? Motion carries. Are there any resolutions that any board members would like hold from the consent agenda at this time?
B-119.
B-119?
B is in B.
Thank you. P-151, and CS-27. Any others? All right, so we have B-119, P-151, and CS-27. And I want to take a motion to accept consent agenda minus B-119, P-151, and CS-27?
So move.
All those in favor of consent agenda minus those three, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? The motion carries. All right, B-119.
Move B-119.
Okay, second, we need a second. Discussion?
I'd like to make the motion to refer this resolution to the Audit and Finance Committee for discussion on its next meeting.
Discussion?
It has to be a second. There's a second.
A second.
Discussion? Where's the second?
It's a transfer of funds that requires board approval, it hasn't been discussed at, it was mentioned at the last Audit and Finance Committee meeting, but we really, we didn't have the details of it, and I thought that we'd have an agreement that we go to Audit and Finance before going to the board.
No, it's on the 26th?
26th.
On the 26th, yeah. No.
Mr. Olson?
Yes.
Mrs. Wood is shaking her head, the, the motion on the table is to postpone this resolution to the 26th. Is there a reason we shouldn't postpone this resolution till after the, till the 26th meeting of the Audit and Finance Committee?
Meeting on the 26th will allow it to be approved on June 30th, I suspect, if that would be postponed.
We need to borrow by Friday, so we, we deny, we reserve for a subsequent plan of using that purpose, so that he thinks per, purpose, we would actually need to know by this tomorrow, and that's why it was postponed already.
Okay. I think that's a different life.
So, if it's not acted on, then...
Well, if the motion is, if the motion is, if we approve the motion, then are those funds, are those funds permanently disposed of in this?
Those, those funds would be used to pay down some debt, so that the, so that it would just avoid borrowing the money that we're indicated we'll have to borrow this week, or basically effective after tomorrow. So, we're trying to avoid interest costs that will extend from now through the term of the debt, which could be 15 years, actually. So, that was the purpose of making this transfer, to avoid borrowing money, to avoid debt service on a certain amount of money.
Well, it's a large amount of money, it's 4.3 million dollars, it was in our fund balance, it's being, you know, it's being disposed of this way into a capital project, it makes it unavailable for any other use that the board might consider, and we didn't have any opportunity to discuss it. So, I just object to it, you know, I, that's why I wanted to take it back, I don't take it back to the Audit and Finance Committee, I think that's the way it should have been done.
I'd say, go ahead. There's a motion, second. Any further discussion? I'm sorry. There's a motion, a second, on the motion to defer. To, he's saying defer until after Audit and Finance.
And there's a motion and a second on the table for that.
Okay, so, all those in favor?
Alan has more.
Yeah.
I just, I guess I'd add one more thing. Obviously, we are the, the people who manage the money in the district, which includes the Audit and Finance Committee, but includes the office, that I manage, we feel comfortable that our financials are in such, are in order to the extent that this, this can be done. A, B, the savings to the district over the course of the lending that we'll have to do if we don't approve this, which could nominally be in the vicinity of half a million dollars, so it's, it's not an insignificant amount of money that we avoid spending in interest costs if we do this. I totally appreciate Mr. Shaughnessy's point that this was, we did not fully discuss this in Audit and Finance Committee meeting, it was, we had a very full agenda at that time, it was brought up, and we decided to defer it at that point, but, you know, I, I would have to say that we're confident that the district can, you know, manage this and manage our other obligations, but, you know, I do, I do appreciate Mr. Shaughnessy's point.
My question is whether there was a procedure or process that wasn't, that's supposed to be followed, that wasn't. Doesn't sound like that.
Any other question? Okay, now, having heard the discussion, all those in favor of deferring this transfer until after next Tuesday, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All those opposed?
No.
No. Well, we already had a discussion.
Yeah, no, I don't, I was...
You're saying no?
I'm saying no, yeah, I thought you were asking me to speak.
I, I didn't hear what you said, no?
No.
Okay. No, no. Any abstentions? Okay, motion's defeated.
Well, it's still a motion that we have to approve, we only, we only voted on the deferral.
Okay, so, all those in favor of B-19, the transfer of funds, I, I want to take a motion?
Well, it's already moved.
Okay. All those in favor of transferring the funds, please signify by saying aye. Opposed?
No.
Okay. Motion carries. The next one that was pulled was P-151. Professional personnel, help. You have to do something for it, be quiet. Okay. Comment? No. Do I lose that?
Yes.
Second?
Second.
All right, discussion. Is this the correct date, 2014, 2015? Or just coming up now?
This, this was a mistake, this person was left off the original resolution that was brought to our attention by payroll when she put in to be paid, this person was left off the resolution by mistake back in the beginning of the year.
Okay, thank you. All those in favor of P-151? Please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Okay, and CS-27? Want to take a motion, CS-27?
So move.
Second, okay, discussion. I have a couple questions on this. Joanne Rapuso, what position is she going to be taking? Bring it up.
Rapuso.
Rapuso, Rapuso? She's Provisionary Secretary Sione.
Oh, she's going to be taking, I'm sorry, Mr. Olson, do you want to answer that?
She's going to be taking that, a position to transfer.
Oh, good, okay, that's what I was hoping. Okay, good. So, she'll be starting, like, next week?
She'll be starting next week.
Good.
Do you, do you agree on it a little earlier?
Right, I knew that, yeah, that's a good thing. Now, my second question is, there's a name on here that, that says appointments, and it says resignation, and it says the same... it says resignation, and it says the same date. Crystal Boyer, Bowler, Bowler? What is that?
Christopher Frieser, the same person.
Christopher Frieser, substitute.
She's gone, she resigned instead.
So instead of, resigned and...
She resigned from her position and took a position as a substitute, on the same day.
Okay. That was it, thank you.
Thank you.
Okay, all those in favor of CS-27, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? And Ellen has some donations. And I would like to read the resolution from the 23. Mrs. Collins suggested I read it. Accept a donation Kingston High School, whereas Leslie and John Carr and Wendell in North share are donating a plaque in honor of all the young men from Kingston High School who have given their lives in service to their country in the first 100 years that Kingston High School served the community, 1915 to 2015. And whereas Dr. Paul J. Patalino Superintendent of Schools has reviewed the proposed donation and recommends the acceptance of this donation, now therefore be it resolved that the Board of Education of the City School District of Kingston, New York does hereby accept with grateful appreciation the donation back to Kingston High School. We have, we have two others. B-124, whereas the Kingston City School District is a recipient of a generous donation from Heisman Trophy Trust in the amount of $30,000 to help in the funding for the new playground at the John F. Kennedy Elementary School, and whereas Dr. Paul J. Patalino Superintendent of Schools has reviewed the proposal and recommends acceptance of this donation, and now therefore be it resolved that the Board of Education of the City School District of Kingston, New York does hereby accept with grateful appreciation the donation of $30,000 from Kingston City School District. Second one, B-125, it's a scholarship fund, authorization to establish a scholarship fund, I guess that's considered a donation, whereas the Board of Education of the City School District of Kingston, New York has received a request to establish a scholarship fund in the amount of $3,216.39 to establish an annual scholarship at Kingston High School for graduating senior. This scholarship fund should be set up with the opportunity for future donations to the account and asked that the scholarship be called the Donald J. Sweeney Memorial Scholarship. And whereas Dr. Paul J. Patalino Superintendent of Schools has reviewed the request and recommends the acceptance of establishing a scholarship, now therefore be it resolved that this donation be accepted with grateful appreciation to establish the Donald J. Sweeney Memorial Scholarship. Be it further resolved that a scholarship in the amount of $500 will be awarded annually to graduating Kingston High School student that meets the criteria established by the donor. And I believe we had something on our packet that Mr. Sweeney was a beloved former faculty member. Bailey's, well, thank you very much. Okay, we now reach the end of the consent agenda, and Board of Education reports. First one, this coffee and conversation, there's a coffee conversation on Tuesday, May 19th, yesterday, at Monkey Joe's, at 1:30 in the afternoon, and we, Dr. Patalino and I attended, and there was one parent who came, who was concerned about the length of time spent reading, post-reading textual material in the, in the 5th grade, and so he, he would like to see more literature and more challenging material, and that was extended there.
Yes, it was.
And the Deed Stadium commercial. Mr. Michael.
Thank you, ma'am. The committee met last week on May 14, right here at the Sione Building. I have three interesting notes to say. We are evidently good enough to, to win the, the bid for the football players done by the Section 9 for the next two years, where it will be a good revenue for the commission, but also will have an economic impact on the community. We scheduled the maintenance work for the, for the field to be done on June 9th at the cost of $3,300, and we believe that money will spend for the extension of the life of the turf. And also, I have a Sega date for August 17 for our annual golf tournament, so anybody likes to play golf, just give me a call and we set up a team. Thank you.
What's the date?
Thank you very much.
August 17.
I'm sorry. Okay, that concludes our board reports. Any old business anyone would like to raise at this point? Any board member? Old business? Old business? Okay, new business? No new business? Alright, board member announced then. Great, yes, Mr. Shaw, you see?
I'd like to congratulate the music department at Kingston High School on their masterworks concert on May 14th at Point of Prejudice Church. It was an excellent concert and one of the jewels of the Kingston City School District.
Thank you. Any other board member asked? Why not? I did attend the grand opening of the playground, and it was wonderful, and the kids, it was great to see them, and I would like to thank Mr. and Mrs. Siri for working so hard, and also Mrs. Bowden, and everybody from Kennedy School. The kids sure did have a good time. I wanted to go down the slide, you know, it looked like a lot of fun.
You did, after this.
You did? It was great, and the Heisman Trophy was there, that was wonderful, and Mr. Whalen, everything was, it was really nice, nice program. Thank you. Thank you. Mr. Shaw, you went as well, Dr. Patalino, Reverend Childs, and I, all attended, and it was wonderful. Absolutely wonderful. Yes.
I saw a brief story about the Heisman Trophy. There's a connection to the city of Kingston. Andy Murphy, who was the former deceased Parks and Recreation Commissioner for many years, was a, I don't know if he was an alumni, he graduated from Notre Dame, but he was on the football team at Notre Dame in 1943, and the first Heisman Trophy winner from Notre Dame was Angelo Bertelli, and they were best friends, and Angelo Bertelli used to come to Kingston quite frequently to watch Kingston High School football games.
I have one announcement. On Friday, May 22nd, Kingston High School is hosting a special dedication for the plaque that is being donated, but there's a presentation being done, and civics classes are involved, as is the band, and so everybody's welcome to come. 1:30, it's the 8th period, and tonight, we have guest speakers. Dr. Patalino speaking, the KHS Band Wind Ensemble is performing, and so I think it'll be very interesting. Please come. Thank you.
I believe the invitation says meet in the lobby.
It's actually, it starts in the front hall and proceeds outside. There's a rededication of, I don't, I don't want to spoil the surprise, of something that's been uncovered after nearly 100 years, so. Yes. So I just had something else to announce, that tomorrow night, I know there's a lot of things going on, there's award ceremonies, there's things like that, but the Mount Academy is having a musical tomorrow night at 7 o'clock, and I will be going, I don't know what, if anyone else will be going. I will, well, I don't know if anybody else will be going. I can't wait to see it.
You signed up, right?
Are you coming as well? For concert?
No, absolutely.
Okay. And the other board member announcement. So, we've now reached public participation again, so if there's anyone who would like to contribute at this point, please come forward to the microphone. And speak directly into the microphone. Two minutes, Mrs. Bowers.
Yes, thank you. We can do it in two minutes. My name is Maureen Bowers, and I am a founding member of Raising Hope, which is another board that exists in this community in Ulster County, and the purpose, the mission of that board is to mentor women in Ulster County who have expressed an interest in changing their lives, bettering their lives, and do some philanthropic work. It's a board I'm very proud to be a part of. Next, a week from tomorrow, we're having our annual event, and of course, all of you are welcome to come, but I wanted to boast about somebody in this room who is, got her head down over there, but she's, she's already spoken tonight, but not about herself, and I know she wouldn't speak about herself, but Carol Dexter is being honored as one of the mentors by, among other people, I think, the nomination is a student who was a kindergarten student a while back, we won't say how long, and, and, but it was several years, many years ago, can I say many years ago, and, and she has remembered her teacher, Mrs. Dexter, all these years, and nominated her as a mentor, and she'll be receiving one of the, I think, six awards that night, and I just wanted you to be aware of one of our jewels here in, in our district. Thank you.
Anyone else would like to address the board? Okay, as we have no need for second executive session, I will entertain a motion to adjourn. Becca?
I second.
All those in favor? Aye.
I figured I'd go with the color one, so that was weird. It would have had stronger. I was still willing to save Jim. Thank you, thank you very much. I was so happy. I walked in like... I guess pretty sure it's that day. I'm dying. It was a long mess. She's getting married on the 17th. I do need them, I know, I'm not the one who's going to travel, I just wanted to say that right now. They told me, they just got off, the whole week, really? Yeah. I'm going, I have, but I think I'm going to the next...
It was mentioned at the last, it wasn't...